That was a little premature, give me a second.
Mr. Flynn being let in?
Don't let him in Cory.
I can only ask, I can't control.
Nah, he's right here.
Okay, we are here.
Give me one second Cory, it was premature recording.
It says recording.
Yeah, that's the livestream, I'm getting the livestream up. There you go, now you can go.
Welcome to October 5th, 2020, Monday night's Common Council Meeting. We asked that the clerk, can you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. President, if all members could unmute themselves so that they can respond to their names. Anani. Ballerin.
Yeah.
Conti. Dosette.
Here.
Fahy.
Here.
Farrell.
Here.
Flynn.
Here.
Frederick.
Present.
Howie.
Here.
Igo.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Kimbrough.
Here.
Love.
Here.
O'Brien.
Here.
Robinson. Fourteen members present and one absent.
Thank you, and Madam Clerk, can you put up our flag so council members can join me in the Pledge Allegiance? And at the end of the Pledge Allegiance, we'll have a moment of silence.
Yes, Mr. President.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We are now. Public comment period on our agenda, doing public comment period. You have five minutes to speak and talk about any subject you wish to talk about. At that time, council members will not be able to respond to your comments. If they choose to do so, they will respond at a later date. And anyone who chooses to speak, can you just say your name, first and last name, and address for the record? With that being said, Madam Clerk, do you have any people signed up for public?
We do, we have people that are signed up and with us live, we have Zachary Simpson.
Good evening Zach, go ahead.
Hi, good evening and thank you, Mr. President, members of the Common Council, for the opportunity to speak here tonight. My name is Zachary Simpson, I reside at 175 Homestead Avenue in the city of Albany. I just wanted to take a couple of minutes tonight to advise of some upcoming meetings and events here in Albany. October 29th of this month, at 6 o'clock, the Uptown Neighborhood Cooperative will be having a special Zoom meeting focused solely on disaster preparedness. We have invited representatives from American Red Cross. American Red Cross, in partnership with New York State, provides free emergency preparedness training to organizations. The presentation will provide residents with the knowledge and tools to prepare for emergencies and disasters, both natural and human-made. Respond to them, and also to recover to pre-disaster conditions as quickly as possible. Some topics they're going to discuss include how to create a family evacuation plan, how to assemble emergency supply kits, and also the necessary steps to take to protect your family and community. So if you or your constituents are interested to sign up for the Zoom conference, they can email uptowncooperative@gmail.com. Council of Albany Neighborhood Associations, Kena, is meeting this Wednesday at 6:30 via Zoom. We have invited Aaron Mayer to speak on the topic of environmental justice. Aaron is a New York State Department of Health Epidemiological Spatial Analyst and Environmentalist. Mr. Mayer is also an expert public speaker on environmental policy, land use, brownfields, diversity, equity, inclusion, organization, culture change, voting rights, and reapportionment. Sounds like a very interesting speaker. Also, we have two other speaker segments coming up, first Wednesday of November and December. In November, the invited guests will be focusing on housing justice, and in December, the focus will be public health justice. So hopefully, you can catch one or all of these meetings. The City of Albany Public Education Government Access Oversight Board will be meeting this Thursday at 5:30 to finalize plans for a virtual celebration of Community Media Day and Free Speech Week in collaboration with Open Stage Media and Schenectady. For those who may not know, Community Media Day is October 20th. It's an annual celebration of the importance of free speech and accessible media. And also Free Speech Week is the 19th to the 25th. It's an annual nonpartisan celebration of freedom of speech and freedom of the press. So I understand in years past, the Common Council has done proclamations for these events. So I was hoping this year, we can possibly do the same. So that's about it, thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you.
Can the clerk, can the clerk please call the next speaker?
Tom McTheaters.
This is McTheaters, good evening, Mr. McTheaters, you have five minutes, go right ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. I want to briefly speak tonight in support of Councilman Johnson's resolution encouraging the city to start a process to develop a community center in the South End of Albany. This is something that many people in the South End have talked about for years and years. We know it's a long process, but I hope the council will look favorably on this resolution to start that process, to find a suitable site and funding, and all the things that are necessary to make that happen. It is a challenging process, we know, but since the city has already started in the West Hill neighborhood, we think that there's an equally good chance, in a highly engaged neighborhood like the South End, that we can do it here with the city's support. So I want to thank Councilman Johnson for bringing this to the fore and want to support the next step. I also would like to say a few words about the efforts that the city's Building Department and Planning Department is making now, and I'm not sure they're on the agenda, to make it easier for people to develop and rehab houses in the South End. It's been a difficult process for people to get access to the properties that are owned by the Albany County Land Bank. We're hoping that some steps can be taken to make this easier for small contractors and for people who, individuals who want to develop ownership opportunities in the South End. But thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McTheaters. Can the clerk please call the next speaker?
There's also McDowell that's in the queue that wants to submit a public comment.
Mr. McDowell, are you there?
Good evening, thank you for inviting us. My name is Tor McDowell, I'm at 319 McCarty Ave, in the South, also in the South End.
Thank you, sir.
I'm here representing our Albany Pop Warner team, and I'm asking to speak to you guys about the dog problem we're having on the field. We have a lot of kids on this field, usually between the month of July to end of November. And every day, we have a problem with people not cleaning up after themselves with their dog. And you know, like I know, you would not want your kids coming home sliding into this, you know, these kind of things. And it's just terrible that nobody, you know, picks up. We've been talking with Councilwoman Fredericks about the incident that we have on this field, and we're just hoping you guys could vote on this to at least help us alleviate the problem, maybe help us, you know, raise the fence so that the dogs can't jump over it. I don't know, you know, just something so that, you know, you can have this freedom so that the kids don't have these kind of worries, or they're on their feet. Other than that, thank you guys for inviting me, and again, Councilwoman Ms. Frederick, thank you for bringing us to the board, and Councilman Eric Johnson, thank you also for introducing me to Councilwoman Fredericks, and you guys have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. McDowell. Can the clerk please call the next speaker?
Darmel Ricks.
Yes, good evening, how you doing?
State your name and your address for the record, please.
My name is Darmel Ricks. 160B Third Avenue, Albany, New York, 12202.
And I'd just like to let you know, I don't know if you were on earlier, but during public comment period, you can speak about any issue you want to for five minutes. At this time, council members cannot respond to you. If they choose to do so, they will respond at a later portion of the agenda. But go right ahead, sorry, go right ahead.
All right, I'm not sure, because I'm actually the president for Albany Pop Warner. I don't want to kind of echo what McDowell said, but I'm pretty sure it's the same problem that I have about the field being a dog park. The field being a dog park and constantly having to clean up feces. And actually, last week, we had a kid fall in it, oh, fallen feces, and parents was irate with the situation. And it's just, hello?
We can hear you.
Do you have chicken?
I'm in the middle, I was in the middle of a drive-through, I'm so sorry about that. I'm so sorry, but yeah, never mind, never mind. Yeah, I was in the middle of the drive-through when I came through too early, I'm so sorry about that. So, oh, yeah, so that's the issue that we've been having, constantly cleaning up. Last week, two weeks ago, we found drug needles on the field. And it's just been getting out of hand the last couple of months, really, besides last year and the year before that. And we just looking to make this program bigger and better, to try to right the wrongs of the previous presidents and administrations. So whatever the city can do to help us, we're willing to, even if we have the maintenance to fill ourselves, we have enough staff to do it, and we are willing to do it. We just looking to have Foley Field back as Albany Pop Warner's home. And that's pretty much it.
Thank you, sir, thank you so much for the words.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can the clerk please call the next speaker?
We also had Willie White provide some feedback, and I don't see him in the queue.
Did he write it, or?
He sent us an email in support of Councilmember Johnson's legislation regarding community centers in the South End. But we provided him the credentials if he wanted to come on and provide his comment live. I don't see anyone else, and then we also received a comment from one of the constituents, Ms. Alana Klein.
Okay, since we're not past our 30-minute mark, you can read it, we don't have to wait till the next, what's her name, go ahead.
All right, bear with me one second. Mr. President and members of the council, I hope you are all safe and healthy. I've been an advocate for creating a park or trails for recreational vehicle use, but I never indicated a desired or specific location. A potential location was mentioned to me, and I ran with it. Last summer, when I began pushing this idea, I got a lot of flack, including telling me that there was no green space in Albany for a park. Well, now, we found green space on the Capitol Hills property. Do you know what these same people are telling me? What about Tivoli? There's space at Lincoln Park, the dump closes in a few years. It may seem asinine to make this comparison, but what do we do to prevent people from playing basketball, or baseball, or football, or soccer in the streets? We built fields and parks, what do we do when skateboarding on the sidewalks was a problem? We built a park. I'll be the first to admit that this is a complicated issue from transportation of said vehicles to and from the park, which I have a solution for, to liability. However, I'll be the first to point out that it's problematic to criminalize a hobby that properly defined to a specific area is benign. Why did it take a proposition of a recreational vehicle park in a white neighborhood to get these suggestions to place it in a black neighborhood? I know the answer, the hand is in the cards. If you want to allow for recreational vehicle use, then work with me to find an area in the city or county where it is a viable option. If not, you might as well just outlaw them outright, instead of sending the message that they're legal as long as you have private property. Don't hide behind only certain areas of the city, because then it assumes you mean only certain residents of the city. Black Lives Matter.
Thank you. And seeing there is no other public comment, right, Madam Clerk?
No, if you'd like, I could read Mr. Willie White's comment, but.
Yes, please. Please do.
Yeah, bear with me one second. Topic, community center in the South End. Dear Sir, Councilmember Johnson, I support your resolution 100%. If there's anything I can do to help push the agenda forward, please don't hesitate to reach out. His comment.
Okay. Seeing there's no other public comments written or otherwise, we will deem this public comment period closed at this time, and we'll be moving on to approval of minutes, Mr. Kimbrough.
Thank you, Mr. President, I offer the meeting minutes for our Monday, September 21st of 2020 for approval.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Hi.
See hands, minutes approved. Moving on to consideration of local laws, Mr. Igo.
Mr. President, I notice Local Law N of 2020, and ask for its introduction at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Igo, can the clerk please read the local law?
A local law amending Chapter 363 of the Code of the City of Albany in relation to the creation of an application and licensing process for door-to-door vendors.
Kimbrough.
Thank you, Mr. President, it's referred to the Law Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Kimbrough.
Rest, thank you, Mr. President, rest of the local laws are held.
Thank you, sir. Continuing on, we, oh my goodness, reports of standing committees. Ms. Farrell, would you like, Mr. Kimbrough, you'd like to go first, okay, go ahead, Mr. Kimbrough.
Thank you, Mr. President, the Public Safety Committee will be meeting Thursday, November 5th to discuss our police reform legislation, that will be Local Law H of 2020, Local Law I of 2020, Local Law J of 2020, and also some amendment to the CPRB legislation also. Thank you, there will be public comment during the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Kimbrough, Mr. Flynn.
Thank you, Mr. President, the Parks Recreation and Family Services Committee met October 1st to discuss ordinance 189120. The ordinance basically doesn't want dog walkers in the park from August to November at Hoffman Park to accommodate our youth sports. It was unanimously voted with a favorable recommendation, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn, Ms. Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President, the Finance Committee has a meeting. We have many meetings upcoming, but we will be meeting on Wednesday of this week and on Thursday. Wednesday.
Uh-oh, you muted.
Sorry.
Problem, I got you. You muted, I don't know.
You just muted me. Yeah. So on Wednesday, we're going to have a Budget Office presentation with Mike Wheeler and Rachel McInnany, and on Thursday, we'll have a debt report presentation by Dari Shonfar, and the Department of Administrative Services will present.
Thank you, Ms. Farrell, Ms. Fahy.
I'm sorry.
Would you like to report on the?
I think I already reported on that, thank you.
There's no more reports of any standing committees, we'll move on to Agenda ordinances, introductions of ordinances, Mr. Howie.
Thank you, Mr. President, I'd like to introduce, I notice ordinance 23-101-20, and like it to be introduced tonight, thank you.
Mr. President, I believe Councilmember Love has her hand raised.
Yes, I skipped Ms. Love, you're right. Ms. Love, sorry about that, so hold off on introducing yours, Mr. Howie.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. President, I notice ordinance 22.101.20, and ask for its introduction.
Thank you. Can a clerk please read the ordinance?
An ordinance of the Common Council authorizing the sale to Thomas Lacy of city-owned land at 47 First Street.
Mr. Kimbrough.
Thank you, Mr. President, that will be referred to the Finance Committee.
Thank you, now, Mr. Howie.
Thank you, Mr. President, I notice ordinance 23-101-20, and ask for its introduction.
Thank you, can the clerk please read the ordinance?
An ordinance amending ordinance 8.31.19, titled an ordinance amending Article 8 of Chapter 115 Code of the City of Albany to authorize and permit the keeping of hens as adopted by the Common Council of the City of Albany on July 1st, 2019, in relation to the expiration thereof.
Mr. Kimbrough.
Thank you, Mr. President, that will be a referral to General Service Committee.
Thank you, continue on with ordinance introduced, Mr. Ballerin.
Thank you, Mr. President, I notice 24.101.20, and ask for its introduction.
Thank you, can the clerk please read the ordinance?
An ordinance amending Paragraph 1 of Section 48-17 of Article 2 of Chapter 48 of the Code of the City of Albany, increasing the minority and women labor utilization plan for contractors from 17.8% to 25%.
Mr. Kimbrough.
Thank you, Mr. President, that's a referral to Human Resources and Human Rights Committee.
Thank you. Now continuing on to ordinances, Mr. Kimbrough, introduce, Mr. Kimbrough.
Thank you, Mr. President, I notice ordinance 25.101.20, and ask for its introduction.
An ordinance of the Common Council authorizing the sale to Daniel Kedalso of city-owned land at 22 Genesee Street.
Mr. Kimbrough.
Thank you, Mr. President, that's a referral to the Finance Committee.
Thank you. Continuing on with ordinances, we're going to vote if ordinances held, Ms. Fredericks.
Thank you, Mr. President, I notice ordinance 1891.20 as amended, and asks for its passage by vote.
Thank you, Ms. Fredericks, can the clerk please read the ordinance?
An ordinance amending Article 1 of Chapter 115 of Part 2 of the Code of the City of Albany in relation to prohibiting dogs on Foley Field in Hoffman Park during certain times of the year.
Thank you, so discussion on the resolution? I mean, on ordinance, Ms. Fredericks?
Thank you, Mr. President, Pop Warner is one of the best youth programs that we have here in our city. This program provides youth football services to children ranging from the age of 5 to 16. They typically get about 300 participants each year, and they generally range from low-income households and also minority households. Now, unfortunately, Pop Warner has faced the issue for the last couple of years of having increased dogs frequenting the field in which they play, Foley Field at Hoffman Park. And this is leading to many unsanitary conditions for our kids, which is completely unacceptable. Our kids should not have to be playing in unsanitary conditions, and they deserve the basic rights and the respect and a clean field to play their sports on. So that being said, I'm looking to bring this ordinance forward so that during their season through the months of August through November, dogs are not allowed on Foley Field, so our kids can play in sanitary and just conditions, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fredericks, any further discussion on the ordinance?
I have a question, son, is that a city-designated dog park for all those other months, or people just use it?
It is not an official city-designated dog park, but a lot of dogs do frequent the area.
Any place else around there, on the other side of?
Mr. Igo, all due respect, we're not here to figure out where we are.
I'm just looking to solve a problem, not trying to, you know, so maybe something to look forward to.
Thank you, Ms. Igo, I appreciate it, we appreciate it. Any further discussion on the ordinance? Seeing, Mr. Anani?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. You know, as a dog owner, as a new dog owner, you know, when I first read the piece of legislation, quite frankly, I was a little bit broken-hearted. As I know that many, you know, dogs are family members to people, and, you know, to see something be closed off because of a small, the actions of small people making, not cleaning up after their dog, is quite frankly, is something that needs to be addressed as relates to, you know, individuals going to parks, if their dog poop, they should just clean it. And I hope that this is a step in the right direction, and also some type of enforcement. You know, very too often, I don't try to support legislation that, you know, it's hard to legislate morale, but I think that speaks to our society and what we are starting to see all across our city. There are certain parks where individuals, if your dog poop, you pick it up. And there are some individuals of our city, they just, if a dog poop in a park, they just walk past it, or poop in the street, they just walk past it. It's unfortunate that, you know, Hoffman Park is going to be closed during those months, but I strongly support the actions taken by the councilwomen from the first ward. We have to send a message that we care about our kids, that our kids need a place to play that is safe, sanitary. There's also a health issue, and I hope that with the passage of this legislation, it will echo all across for dog owners, that if you have, if your dog poop around the neighborhood, just clean it, just pick it up, because other parks are going to start closing because of these actions. And I hope this is not an action that's going to be seen moving forward, but I just want to thank the councilwomen for introducing this resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Anani, Mr. Flynn?
I just want to answer Joe's question, Joe, there is a dog park in the first ward, down off Delaware Ave, down on Enormous Gulf.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn. No further discussion, can a clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. President, if all council members can unmute themselves, Mr. Anani. I think he said, yes, co-sponsor? Ballerin.
Yes, co-sponsor.
Conti.
Yes.
Dosette.
Yes.
Fahy.
Yes, co-sponsor.
Farrell.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Flynn.
Yes.
Frederick.
Yes.
Howie.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Igo.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Johnson.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Kimbrough.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Love.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Cortney in the affirmative.
Ordinance passes, Mr. Kimbrough.
Thank you, Mr. President, rest of the ordinances on the. Thank you, Mr. President. Rest of the ordinances on the agenda are held, but I'd actually like to make a correction. What I'd like to do with Mr. Hoy's ordinance on the hen expiration date is refer to the law committee that the initial one went to law, so make that referral to law. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kimbrough.
Is that the chicken one?
Yes.
Yes. Yep. Continuing on to our agenda, resolutions introduced. Ms. Fahy.
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice resolution eighty-eight one oh one twenty R, ask for its introduction and ask for its passage and roll call vote thereon.
Thank you, Ms. Fahy. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the common council appointing Anthony Gaddy as a member of the city of Albany Industrial Development Agency and the Capital Resource Corporation.
Did you discussion on a resolution? Seeing none, can a clerk please call the roll?
I'm sorry, Mr. President. Mr. Robinson was joining us. Onani.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Baller.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Conti.
Yes, co-sponsor.
Dosette.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Fahy.
Yes.
Farrell.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Flynn.
Yes, co-sponsor.
Frederick.
Yes, co-sponsor.
Hoy.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Igo.
Yeah, yes, co-sponsor, please.
Johnson.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Kimbrough.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Love.
Yes, co-sponsor.
O'Brien.
Yes, co-sponsor.
And Robinson.
Yes, co-sponsor.
That's fifteen in the affirmative.
Resolution passes. Continue on, resolution held. Ms. Fahy.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to introduce resolution eighty-nine one oh one twenty R and ask for both, ask for its passage and a roll call vote.
Thank you, Ms. Fahy. Can clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the common council appointing L. Lloyd Stewart as a member of the city of Albany Industrial Development Agency and the Capital Resource Corporation.
There any discussion on the resolution? Seeing none, can a clerk please call the roll?
Onani.
Yes.
Baller.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Conti.
I guess in co-sponsor.
Dosette.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Fahy.
Yes.
Farrell.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Flynn.
Yes, co-sponsor.
Frederick.
Yes, co-sponsor.
Hoy.
Yes, co-sponsor.
Igo.
Co-sponsor, please.
Johnson.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Kimbrough.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Love.
Yes. Co-sponsor.
O'Brien.
Yes, co-sponsor.
Robinson.
Yes, co-sponsor.
Fifteen in the affirmative.
Resolution passes. Moving on to resolutions held, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice eighty-four point ninety-two point twenty R as amended. I would like it to be read and a voice vote.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Can a clerk please read the resolution?
A resolution calling on the mayor of the city of Albany to look into constructing a city-owned community recreational center in the South End.
Is there any discussion on the resolution? Mr. Johnson, go ahead, Mr. Johnson.
Well, you want me to wait or?
You can go.
So, you know, everybody knows how near and dear this issue is to me. You know, I just want to say a few names, Rudy Vito, George, Bill, Pete, Ice, Larry, Pee Wee, Coach Ray Howland, Mr. Wallace, Lenny Morris, Janice Parker, Betty Barnett, Sammy Surgey. These are people that I and other members of our community came in contact with growing up with community centers located throughout Albany. I have been an advocate for a community center in the South End, but I know the impact that community centers is needed throughout our city. And one of the things that community centers provided us growing up is a lot of times we competed against each other, you know, kids from different neighborhoods, and as a result of competing against each other, we form respect and bonds that carried off the court, and I just think that we have some single parents that are raising their kids in our community and they're working and, you know, knowing that your kids are in a safe environment, you know, allows for our single parents to be able to do the things that they need to do to be able to provide for their families. We have two two-family households that both parents are working, and they also need to be able to understand that it's safe places for their kids to go. You know, I could speak to the need from a personal standpoint, being a member growing up in community centers, and I could speak to being an adult running a community center. The relationships that are formed, you know, our community centers pretty much can raise a kid because they don't age out of the community center. What they do is they end up coming back and working with the community in the community center. So I think that is so many benefits that community centers offer, and, you know, when we look at the times that we're in, you know, our kids need, you know, a message that their lives matter, so I'm happy to push this resolution in front of everyone, and, you know, I would appreciate as much support as it could get. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Ms. Fredericks.
I would just like to commend Councilmember Johnson and really, really stand here in support with him with this resolution. A community center is a very needed resource in the South End, and you're directly with this legislation, you're directly asking for a study to be done here to see if we can get the resource, which is something our community is very much lacking. Community centers bring great resources to the community and to our youth, provide safety, as Councilmember Johnson said, and a good opportunity for kids to find an outlet and also get educational materials as they grow up throughout throughout their lives, their youth in our city. So, that being said, I just want to commend again Councilmember Johnson, thank him for bringing this forward and looking forward to working closely with you and helping to advocate for this as well.
Thank you. Mr. O'Brien.
Yeah, I certainly intend to vote for this. I guess I would have a question because this year it seems that there are a lot of capital projects proposed throughout the city for youth and recreation. And it would seem to me to make this more than just an aspirational resolution. Isn't there some way of actually getting this included maybe in some of those other projects that are being proposed this year in particular?
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Mr. Ballard.
I just want to thank Councilman Johnson for putting it forward. I think for many of us who've, you know, looked at the summer and looked forward to going back to school, looked forward to those out of the classroom experiences, you know, that was your safe haven. That was your area to grow. That was your area to develop. That was where you you did your applications for college. That was your 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 place where you could you could build your confidence and really just be a normal kid for a little bit. So we don't have enough of those safe heavens in our city. We don't have enough of those places for our kids to to go and build that confidence and get those resources. So I I support this and I look forward to voting for it.
Mr. Onani.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I rise in support of this resolution. You know, as an educator, and I've always worked with kids since my adult years, one thing I know is that kids are always learning. You know, when the three o'clock bell rings, their mind is still turning, and I think that this city for our, for the city to move forward, we have to prioritize what the kids are doing after school, and we have to make sure that we have proactive outlets for our youth, whether to extracurricular activities, where playing basketball or even doing coding or learning how to box. These are some of the soft skills that they could also learn while staying in fitted. So I want to commend the councilmember from the second ward for introducing this resolution. I hope we don't get gray hair before we see a community center, but I hope this is something that this dream become a reality in the near future. I strongly support our youth. Our kids need an outlet. I know this is something that's been advocated over the years, particularly in the low wards. If we want to prevent the violence that we're seeing, we want to make sure that our kids have an outlet out here in the community and all neighborhoods, making sure that all neighborhoods are working with community centers. This is something that neighborhood have called for, and I I hope that I'll be at the ribbon cutting when it actually happens. If I'm not, I want to thank the councilmember who make it happen too. So again, I want to thank councilmember Derek Johnson for introducing this resolution. Let's move forward. Thank you.
Mr. Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to commend Councilman Johnson for putting this resolution forward for the South End. I'm a community center kid. I'm a product of the Arby Hill Community Center. And there was times where, you know, I, you know, if you know, I couldn't get help with my homework during, you know, school hours, the community center was there for me and it built, you know, me so many skill sets inside of me that I rely on till this day. And so I I've stand in full support of this, and again, thank you, Councilman Johnson for putting this forward. It is vital that we have a community center, I believe in every neighborhood, for every neighborhood to work. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kimbrough.
Yes, I'd just like to, you know, speak in support of Mr. Johnson's legislation. My my home community center back in Chicago, Franklin Park Fieldhouse. All of what everyone said happens at the centers, but you also build lifelong relationships. I have friends. I don't live in Chicago anymore, and I haven't for a while, but I still communicate with friends that I grew up with at the Franklin Park Fieldhouse. So so thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you. And Mr. Johnson, last speaker on this.
Director.
Mr. Conti, would you like to hold on, Mr. Johnson? Mr. Conti, would you like to speak?
Yeah, I was trying to find my virtual, raise my hand when I.
Okay, no, go ahead, Mr. Conti.
But I also want to echo everyone's support, commend Mr. Johnson for advancing this and possibly when we're discussing the capital budget, we can also discuss this item. If this is being done by a voice vote, I'd like to be also added as a co-sponsor.
Thank you.
Corey.
Mr. Igo.
Yes, I'd like to show support for Derek. Him and I have had conversations over the years. My civic center, community center was the YMCA. Still run into people that I played hoop with forty years ago, fifty years ago, and a lot of friends have been made, and I hope that continues, and I hope what returns are some of the like Derek used to say, the green boxes in the basketball courts. You know what? All those courts in the city used to have leagues. You go over, you meet friends, you play in another league, and they're lasting friendships, and it keeps kids out of trouble. I think that has to be returned. I strongly suggest anything we can get going again, and I also would like to see something happen to put the old YMCA to good use in the middle of the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe, and I know Joe's been a big advocate for that old YMCA to be put to use. Thanks, Mr. Igo. Mr. Hoy.
I rise in support also, and just want, if we are going to do a voice vote, I'd like to be a co-sponsor. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Johnson, the last speaker on this. Go ahead, Mr. Johnson.
Yes, I just wanted to say that in the twenty oh eight plan, it was stated that we were going to get a state of our community center. So it's twelve years later, and we still haven't gotten this community center. So it's already been discussed and, you know, we're waiting. So I just wanted to add that in. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson, and would all members like to be co-sponsors on this?
Yes, please. Yes.
Thank you. All members will be co-sponsor. So can the clerk please call the roll?
Thought it was a voice vote.
Yes, a voice vote.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, for reminding me that when we do all co-sponsors, all those in favor of Mr. Johnson's resolutions, aye. No one opposed, so resolution passes. Being said, that is Mr. Kimbrough.
Rest of, thank you, Mr. President. The rest of the resolutions on the agenda are being held.
Mr. Kimbrough.
You you're ready to adjourn? Okay, all right, okay, nothing further. Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
Thank you, Mr. President.